Chair, this is Taylor Halvik.
Yes.
I don't want to interrupt, but I just wanted to suggest that we may need to amend the agenda today or indicate that we're taking some action relating for and against Kathleen.
So there's, today's agenda is for the council to consider two different resolutions regarding body camera tax. And also if they choose, they could choose one of those as well as potentially making a decision on the for and against statements and who will be providing those.
Okay, I didn't see an agenda. Was there, there is no agenda, so.
No, this was a continuation of today's council time. We did post all of the documents on this notice as well for today. There were a couple of adjustments or edits to the resolutions that legal had provided. Those are on our website as well, but we did post all the documents from the presentation that Mark did last time and these documents connected to today's meeting as well, so it's a continuation.
Okay, so I will open the meeting Monday, August 2nd, which is a continuation of council time last Wednesday, which would have been the 28th of August. So I think we're here today to discuss a little bit further about what, which resolution we would like to place on the ballot, which would, which both being a tax that the voters can vote on, one, one of which is a resolution that's a 1% tax for funding for Clark County and other cities, actually, it ends up being 1/10 of 1% for Clark County for criminal, just public safety and criminal justice issues. The other that we're, we have been talking about is a 1% fund to fund Clark County juvenile detention facilities and jails through which it would allow the fund from the general fund to be able to, at this point, fund the activities and the people and all those sorts of things for body worn cameras as well as probably dash cams as well. So I would open it up for just, to begin, rebegin the discussion about these various options we have here.
Madam Chair, would, would you like to have a motion on the floor in order to stimulate that discussion?
Sure, yeah, I'd accept.
What is the resolution number that is before us right now on juvenile detention facilities and jails?
We have one resolution right now, resolution number that you can use, it's 2021-08-01.
So I wish to move approval of 2021-08-01. And I will have one amendment to that which I can propose during the discussion or whenever you wish. I could do it right now.
Why don't you do it right now?
Okay, that would be to add authorizing a sales and use tax of 1/10 of 1% with a 10-year sunset to fund Clark County juvenile and then continue on as is.
Okay, so this would sunset in 10 years after approval.
Correct.
Okay.
Clarifying question.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Counselor Bowerman said a resolution number, but didn't indicate until kind of as an aside here in this moment, which resolution she was putting a motion forward for. So could you please clarify which motion, which resolution it is that you are asking for, for a second?
Shirley, it is the resolution before us on the monitor, which is juveniles detention facilities and jails, sales tax.
So it would be a 1%, 1/10 of 1% to fund Clark County juvenile detention facilities and jails and through which allowing Clark County to fund enforcement body worn cameras and associated operational expenses. That's how it reads.
I'll second that motion.
And the statement on, with the 10-year sunset should probably follow the words detention facilities and jails after the tax is named.
On line 39?
Pardon me?
On line 39 at the end of the resolution?
Oh, okay. Well, I was thinking of everywhere it appears, starting at the very top.
Okay. Okay, so then adding it.
To line five?
Five. Okay. Let's see. And does it, is, okay, everywhere, so line 13. No, that's. It only mentions juvenile detention and jail facilities, but it doesn't mention the tax. So it would be when it mentions the tax. And Taylor, do you have a, does that work, do you believe, to have it worked in at the beginning on line five and then line 39?
Yeah, Chair, I think it, I can work it in there. I'm, would suggest that instead of using the word sunset, perhaps we use, we're expired, at least, at least for purposes of the ballot title, the ballot title language, and I could offer a suggestion, I think, in terms of how that might be accomplished.
Would you be over to that, Counselor Bowerman?
If it means the same thing, yes, I've never heard the word expire used before, but if it means exactly the same thing as sunset, then I'm certainly fine with that.
I think it does.
Okay.
But I, my. The question I think we'll need to address is from what, from what time the clock starts or what time the clock starts? And I think it would be from, I would suggest it would be from the county's adoption of an implementing, an ordinance implementing the tax if approved by the voters. So the end of the ballot title could be this tax will expire 10 years following Clark County's adoption of an ordinance implementing the tax.
I actually had in mind what Mark Gasway had submitted to us as far as it, it sunsetting 10 years after the initial collection, but.
So in terms of the DOR, the collection, the revenue, so if the council then adopts the ordinance following the election, our DN, our Department of Revenue notice, the tax collection would go into effect January 1. So typically in a legislative drafting, we would say, state that the tax will be in effect from, for example, January 1 of 2022 and terminating December 31st of, you know, 10 years.
Yeah, and, and Lindsay, just, just real quickly, it has to be done 60 days before the end of the quarter that you're going to collect it. So we would not have time to implement it by January 1. We wouldn't be able to do it till April 1st because it has to be 60 days before the end of the quarter.
So my recommendation would be to have it specifically say from April 1st of 2022 until March 31st of.
Okay.
2032.
That sounds good.
My concern about that is just relating to not knowing when an ordinance would be. An ordinance still needs to be adopted after this is accomplished and we don't know when that will occur precisely. So we had a trigger date of adoption of an ordinance that, that would give us some more certainty, I think.
So we already know where this is going, but would it make sense, Taylor, to put that sunset or expiration language in the ordinance? And we have to, you know, work ourselves around it right now?
Well, without that language in this, I think it would, the authorization would continue in perpetuity.
This would, we need to deal with it before this resolution is passed. It, it needs to be.
This is the one that's going to be passed, it looks like.
If, if it is passed, this is the one that needs, it needs to state whatever we are doing, not the ordinance, but this. This would, this is what would go, or that we would publicize certainly, not as the explanation, but, you know, it's out there for people to see if this, and we want them to know, we would want them to know it is going to expire or sunset within 10 years.
So why can't, why can't it simply say to expire 10 years after the date of adoption? Something really simple.
I think that's what I'm suggesting, Counselor Medvedje, just that it would be adoption of the ordinance implementing the tax. That would be a subject at the end there.
And how about the substitution for, instead of after adoption, after implementation? Because the collection of the tax, it would be good if it were coordinating with what Mark Gasway had submitted to us as far as estimated numbers.
I, I think a date is just a lot less certain and potentially arguable and.
No, no, no date, but whatever the date of implementation rather than.
Implementation rather than adoption.
Correct.
Of the effective date of an ordinance, I mean.
So that might work. If we passed the ordinance, then it, is it 10 days after that it's, it's implemented usually?
Usually. I think if we're talking about 10 days, I would prefer the date of adoption, but I.
But we don't have a date of adoption, so we can't.
Right, but we would say the county, the adoption, we would know that date at some point in the future, the date that it was adopted, and that would expire 10 years from that date.
Madam Chair, I believe is, is April 1st. Would, or that it would be if it were passed in this upcoming election.
It would depend, Counselor Bowerman, upon whether the council will, will need to take further action to implement this tax. If approved by the voters, the council will subsequently need to draft, consider, discuss, and pass an ordinance that would implement this tax. And that's the ordinance that I'm referring to, is there's another piece of legislation that you'll need to take up later this year, early next year, hard to pinpoint a date where you will adopt code language implementing the tax. And that's the date I'm suggesting.
I'm obviously using the wrong term. I'm referring to Mark Gasway's use of April 1st, whatever that language is. That was the first date of collection. What would be that, that language?
Mark can correct me if he thinks I'm wrong on this, but I think that April 1st date assumes that the council adopts an ordinance in short order right after the election. And that may be true, I just don't, it hasn't, it hasn't happened yet.
I think, Counselor Bowerman, are you asking about the syntax or I mean that the actual word that can be used? Like, is it implementation? Is it not, not, well, I, adoption doesn't appear to be yet because we can adopt it, but it takes another 60 days or something before it's implemented or collected. So is implemented a word that can be used?
And would that refer to April 1st, assuming that council does that action in a timely way?
And let me just, I'm sorry, I want, I want to just ask a question along with that. That, when we do that ordinance, we could be more precise in the date at that time, could we not? Or not?
I don't think it could extend beyond whatever the expiration or sunset that you're providing.
If we have a date, if we have a date, but if we have a word that indicates a date.
And that's what I'm suggesting, Chair, is I think the word that most precisely indicates a date to me is the date of the adoption of the ordinance implementing the tax. And then, because we will know the date that the council takes that vote and at the bottom of the ordinance, there will be a date and everyone will have signed and we will know 10 years from that date, the tax will expire.
Yeah, and I, I actually think that it's, that that should be okay because it's what? 60, 90 days at the most, is that, am I correct there? Or how many days is Mark on?
What, if it's what, what we have to do, we have to notify the Department of Revenue 60 days before the tax begins collection. And it can only begin collection at the beginning of a quarter. So if this is passed by the voters in November, we don't have 60 days before January 1st. So we would have to do the notification 60 days before the end of the, or the beginning of the second quarter, which would be April 1st. So I'm wondering, can the language say that the tax will not exceed collections for 10 years or something like that? I don't, I don't know, Taylor, that's why you're here and not me, so.
And Chair, just for purposes of moving along this discussion, is there some reason why we can't, that it can't just say December 31st, 2032? I mean, just pick, pick the end of the year in 2032, which is 10 years from now? I mean, it would just make it more straightforward.
Well, it might, but outlets, I wanted to hear what Mark was having to say. And I understand this is, you know, threading the needle here, but. And I don't know whether we're talking over each other or through each other or exactly what's happening here, but it's not, it's not real smooth.
I apologize. I, I think that that approach could work, Counselor Olson, of picking a date certain.
It just gets us past the April quarter, it just takes away all those other variables and it's 10 years and maybe six months or eight months of collecting, assuming it passes and that's.
So I think we heard Lindsay say March 31st, 2032. Because that gives mark time or whatever notification needs to be sent before April 1st. Or it can't exceed after April 1st. Correct? Mark, is that right? And I can, okay, let's make it.
Yeah, 60 days prior, we can do notification, which would be, you know, the end of January and then they can begin collecting it April 1st.
And, but as far as sunsetting it, it could be March 31st, 2020, 2032?
Yeah, and again, that language, I'm, I'm deferring to Taylor, how, how that needs to be done, so. But I can work with Lindsay on the actual, assuming it's passed, on the actual language for the Department of Revenue.
Here, here's my concern, Chair and Counselors, and the reason I think it makes sense to go from an adoption date. And that is that this is an authorizing proposition that will authorize the council to take an action that it's not necessarily required to do, it could, it needs to adopt. You can, after it's authorized, it can adopt an ordinance implementing this tax. And when it's, when it's adopted, that will be the start of the tax. And so I, I think it makes sense to measure from the start of the tax instead of a date. I think it makes more sense to measure from the start.
So, okay, all right, you just told Julie that a date would be better and then you changed your mind, so. That's why I went, asked Mark about April the 31st. So is it after adoption or do we put a date in there? Or is it after implementation?
I prefer adoption over implementation. It's, it's, it can be an ordinance, adoption of an ordinance implementing the tax. We can use both, that's actually, I think, a good way to say it. But the date certain, I, I apologize, I'm thinking about this in real time and, and I think the date certain is actually less. You run the risk of losing time on the front end by not adopting an ordinance and you eat into your 10 years if you have a date that's, that's out there a long ways. I guess it's motivating potentially to get it done as fast as possible to start your 10 years or to not lose some of your 10 years. But that, if you went with a date certain at the end, that would be the risk, I think.
Okay, Counselor Bowerman, it's your amendment here, so are we okay?
I'm, for the sake of not being argumentative, yes, I'm okay. However, I do not understand the reasoning why 10-year sunset from the date of implementation is not super clear. If, if, if Taylor or Mark could respond to that, just so I understand, I am not arguing.
I just want to. And I appreciate the discussion, Counselor, and I'm not trying to be argumentative either. I, the only reason I think, I, I think the word implementation is a little bit vague. Whether that means the date you adopt the ordinance implementing the tax or whether it means the day the first dollar arrives in the account. And I think that first dollar scenario is, is a harder, or the date that, that people start paying it at the, at the, at the register. It's just a, a less precise term, I think, than knowing the date that you adopt the ordinance to implement the tax.
So, so, Taylor, if, if the language said from 10 years from the date of first collection, because we know when that would start for sure.
We don't though, Mark, because we don't know when the council will adopt an ordinance for sure to implement the tax, we, we're pretty sure.
We would know it after the fact. We'd know it after the fact. And so anybody watching this, that's going to tell us, tell whomever is in, in office at the time that this tax is expiring, and I'm sure, I don't know if Mark is going to be here, but I'm sure his office will be looking at this and give fair warning, you know, the, about what's going to happen. Because they will know when the tax began to be collected. And I think that's, you know, it's sort of a, you know, you're looking back at it. You can say, you know, that it's going to expire 10 years after. Well, 10 years after the date of the, that the tax is collected or, so first collection, so.
I don't know what that, that means, I'm sorry, Chair, I don't know what first collection means. And there will be no collection unless there's an ordinance that's adopted implementing this.
Yeah, sort of like the word is. This is a legal thing, okay.
I think we are saying essentially the same thing, Counselor Bowerman, when it comes to an implementation of the tax. I think we're properly talking about a wiggle room of 30 to 90, for 60 to 90 days between those two dates. But one has to come before the other, and adoption of the ordinance has to come before any. Anything else.
Understood, and if we could make the 10-year sunset be from the date of the first collection of the tax, that would be really corresponding to the numbers that Mark Gasway had given, which I, I think would be great if, if that is clear. I, I find it clear. As a citizen, I know when the tax is first collected, I, that just seems clear, but that would be my preference.
I, and I think in 10 years from now, I think that there's going to be question about when was it adopted? Now, does it end when it's adopted? Was that when the council voted for it? Go ahead.
Counselor, I think I can address that. So in the, in the ordinance that will implement this tax, it, it can expire. By, by, in our code, it would say this tax expires on such and such date. It will, it can say in the code when, when the tax expires. And it would be, you'd be giving effect to this language at that point. So it would be in the law.
So the date will be in the ordinance. If this, if this initiative or resolution, or the, both resolution and the initiative did the voters pass, then when the ordinance comes forward, we will have dates, actual dates to be able to put in there, is that correct, Taylor?
Yes, provided that it's not more than 10 years.
Right.
Yes.
From.
From.
From adoption, when we vote.
I think from adoption makes the most sense, 10 years from adoption of the ordinance. So in the ordinance, you would have a, a section dedicated to expiration and it would say this expires on such and such date.
Okay, so what that would, what that means to me, as I listen to it, it means that there would be from January to April, that we may not, you know, there's going to be three months of taxes we don't collect over a 10-year, I mean, you know, over a 10-year period. If that is. You know, that that works for you, Counselor Bowerman, fine. If it doesn't, you know, we got to figure out a way to state this.
Well, that was not my intention, but.
Maybe it would make sense, could I confer with a colleague real quickly and, and we can revisit this in just a moment?
Okay, all right. In the meantime, I think the council, go ahead. And in the meantime, I think the council knows what we're talking about here. We're talking about 10-year sunset, basically, of this tax that would require any legislative body at that time, if they wanted to extend it for some reason, they would have to take that action prior to the sunset of this tax. And I think there were some numbers provided to us, et cetera, but is there? I think Counselor Medvedje did second this motion, even though we don't have the exact wording of what we're going to put in here as far as how to, how to state the sunset. But that said, is there further discussion?
Well, I'll open it up, Madam Chair. I support using this statute since we had no collaboration with any of the cities to approach the other resolution. We don't know what their needs are, we have no estimates, we have no idea what they would use funds for. It would be just a simple windfall of millions of dollars to the cities without any stated need. And there's no question, they will spend it, they will find ways to spend that tax money. So I'm not in favor of adopting the other resolution. And I've heard some reference to this being a slush fund because it's more. some reference to this being a slush fund because it's more money than we need. So I want to counter that, or at least add some meat to the argument to support it. Number one, we don't know what the revenue will be. It is just an approximation. It's a forecast, it's an estimate. So we don't know exactly what will come in. It will be less, it could be far more. We just don't know. Likewise, we don't know what all the expenses are. We have a forecast, we have an estimate. We know what the, the body cams and dash cams will actually cost, but all the data, support, all the staffing, what happens in the prosecuting attorney's office, what happens in the court, what happens with all of our 80 contracts for defense counsel, we don't, we can only approximate what those expenses will be. So there may not be any extra money whatsoever. This may be just a best estimate. Now, having said that, this law would authorize expenses that we know we're going to have. We need to remodel our jail. A CJC is losing their lease. We need to find another home to, to rehouse that needed juvenile service. There are a myriad of costs that we could, if we did have some additional money left over beyond supporting dash cams and body cams, we will have good places to spend it in law and justice that are spelled out by this resolution. The other thing that was pointed out by Karen Bowerman last session, and I think it's an important one, software, data, hardware replacement, you need a fund in place to purchase updated equipment or replace damaged equipment. It's not just a one-time purchase. So, there is no slush fund. The, the statute is pretty clear on what it could be used for, and we do have a need for this. I fully support getting body cams and dash cams funded as soon as we can. This is one mechanism that I think the public will support to enable that to occur. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments, counselors, discussion?
Madam Chair.
Counselor Olson.
So, the RCW for the jail, the juvenile detention and jail, let me find it here, says, "Money is received from any intact, any tax imposed under this section shall be solely used for the purpose of providing funds for costs associated with financing, design, acquisition, construction, equipping, operating, maintaining, remodeling, repairing, re-equipping and improvement of juvenile detention facilities and jails." So that's fine. That's a, that's a great purpose for this tax. But that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about a tax that funds body cameras, not about juvenile detention in jails. Additionally, if we, if the voters agree to this tax, it's going to be a difficult, I think, explanation to them, considering, I think this council not long ago, when we talked about a fireworks advisory vote, thought that there were too many items on the ballot already, that it would be difficult to keep everything straight. And now we're going to try to tell them that juvenile detention and jail sales tax is going to be used for body cameras. If they did vote yes on this, in 10 years, given Mark Gassaway's estimates, we would have a 55, almost $56 million fund balance. If we go with the public safety sales tax, and that's also sharing the 60-40 with the cities, the fund balance would be approximately $23 billion. So it does, I didn't hear, hear the term slush fund until today, but it does look like one. And just like the cities could find a way to spend the money, certainly the county can find a way to spend the money. And that's the issue that voters typically have. When we're asking them to impose a tax on themselves, it's not too much for them to ask, that it's very clear about where the taxes go, and we spend it on what we say we're going to spend it on. Just looking at this ballot measure for the juvenile detention and facilities jails, it's not going to say anything about body cameras. That's all it's going to say on the ballot. And we would hope that all the voters are paying attention to the campaigns, and we would hope that all the voters are going to read the for and against statements, but they just simply aren't going to. And so I would think, for me, if our priority is really funding body cameras and not miscellaneous other general fund needs as they come up, that we do that as straightforward as we can and give ourselves the best chance we can of getting this passed. And as I said last week, I have no problem sharing this with the cities. They have public safety needs as well, fire and jail, and potentially body camera programs they're looking to fund. So I have no problem with them getting a portion of this. The city of Vancouver will get the largest, the smaller cities will get tens of thousands of dollars, not millions. So, and having them on board to help with the campaign, I think, makes sense. So I, I just think this is a stretch that we're going to put at jeopardy the ability to get this passed if we go with the juvenile detention and jail tax.
Okay, so I, I just want to make a comment. One of the things that you said, Counselor Olson, that we were using this tax for something other than juvenile, juvenile facilities and jail, and that's not true. We can't. We'll be using this tax for juvenile facilities and jail. It's just that, that will free up money in the general fund to be able to use to support body and dash cams. So we are being honest, this is what we will use this tax for. So it's, it's, it, it is a false statement to say that we're not using this tax for that. We must use this tax for that. And we have plenty of need in that area, but that said, it will also free up funds in our general fund to, in order to fund body cams. And, you know, with regard to the cities, I mean, they, you know, they could use it for parks, for all we know, because only 1/3 excuse me, let me finish, please. I did not interrupt you. So they can use it for, other than criminal justice and public safety. They only have to use a third of it for that. Yes, yes. And so I, I just, it is, we need the funds. We need it for our sheriff's office and for all of our deputies to be able to use it. And the cities can go after their own tax to do that, if they like. As I understand it, they can go directly and do that. At least the city of Vancouver can, that I know. Whether smaller cities can, I don't know, but it would be likely, at any rate, that they can do that. And so I just think that this is, this is the better way to do it, so that we are able to, to have the sufficient funds to do what it is that we will need to do with body cams. As Counselor Medgey said, you know, a lot of these are estimates. Sometimes when you're dealing with FTEs and records and, and technology, it, it all ends up being more anyway. And unfortunately, but we've got a plan, we have to plan with what estimates that we have at this time. And, and I think this is probably the best way to do it, so.
Chair.
Counselor.
So we have a very specific need, and it's just, it's jarring for me to have the council majority clearly considering a measure that we have to bend over backwards to explain when a much clearer, transparent, and sufficiently funded measure is right before us. There's this discussion that you've had amongst yourselves about how the cost may go up and we don't know what it will be. But in this projection out that Mark Gassaway did, and as Counselor Olson referenced, even that ends up with a fund balance based on projecting outward. It is, in my opinion, terribly poor form to go to the voters and tell them, we are asking you for money for one thing, but the real thing that we want the money for, and that we're going to move around different pots in order to get to, is this other thing. Especially when we have a clear and straightforward way of getting there. I'm also very alarmed at the fact that the juvenile jail tax brings in two to three times more money than we need to fund body cameras and dash cameras, which is, as I understand it, our express goal for this entire conversation. And just as you were talking about not knowing how the cities are going to spend money, which would be rightfully theirs and not our problem, to know how they're going to spend it, we have no plan for the voters on how we are going to spend this additional money that we're asking them for. You can talk about potential jail remodel, potential this, potential that, but we have no plan. So you're going to the voters and asking them to give money and have faith that this council will spend it well. And I don't have that faith and think that it is a proposition that many voters, if they even understand it in the first place, since the ballot measure looks like it is solely to fund juvenile jail, I don't know that the voters will support that either. And it's alarming to me that this council would not take a clear, straightforward, and sufficient route. It makes me think that this council does not want to fund body cameras and intends for this ballot measure to lose.
Madam Chair.
Counselor Bowerman.
Quite the opposite is the intent. There is certainly no desire whatsoever not to fund body cameras. Instead, it is to fund their implementation through the year 2050. Now, how is that accomplished? Counselor Olson referred to the balance of around $56,000 in the year 2032. But the point is that after the sunset, all of the funds can carry through, at least if the projections on incoming sales tax and actual expenses, it would carry through 2050 if those estimates are roughly correct. If they're a little bit off, if sales tax is shown to be a little bit higher than what it actually is, the year might vary by one or two years. The point is that with a tax that sunsets and those funds in the balance are used for the purpose that is outlined at the beginning, it is a not, what Counselor Lance said, excess funds. It is not additional money that she referred to, and it is not having no plan. In fact, it's quite the contrary. It's having a plan so that body cams can be funded over the longer term without a constant tax placed on the people to make it happen. Thank you.
Madam Chair. Counselor Olson.
They're just, we, you know, to remind that we can collect taxes and make a plan, but we can't bind any future council. So the intent might be to carry this program out through an extended period of time, but, but there's no guarantee. And, and when that money is in the general fund, sitting there, there will be a lot of departments that are looking at it. And we've collected it, or will have collected it, without a plan for it. And I, that Counselor Lance is correct about that. Right now, we have a plan for body cameras. We don't have a plan to spend tens of millions of dollars in excess of, of what we need to collect for body cameras. And again, I understand the desire for this particular tax, I get it. But my priority is to pass this so that we can fund body cameras. And I think this is going to be a barrier to getting this ballot measure passed. That is my concern.
Other discussion?
It's like Taylor went to weigh in with her language. I support what I said earlier, and, you know, we know there are going to be incredible costs on the jail. We spent a year on a task force. We've, it, it was only the pandemic and the emptying of our jail temporarily that kind of paused that discussion. Yeah, have we hired consultants? No, we haven't. You know, we need a, a new roof on the courthouse. You know, those car, capital costs are there. Yeah, we have specific funding needs within the general fund that this will help open the door for. So, yes, we have a specific plan. We know what our needs are. We don't know what the needs of the individual cities are and to get, collect a tax 40%, of which they will get without any known need or amount, or how they'll use it. That, to me, is absurd. And so, anyway, I, I would invite if Taylor's got some specific language, otherwise I'd like to get to a vote.
I, I have two, two options that I think the council can choose between. The first that I explained earlier was that you, it would be 10 years following the adoption of an implementing ordinance. And then you would pick that date. You would know that date once you were adopting the ordinance. Or you could choose a date certain out in the future. You could even give yourself an extra six months, you know, and just have that be the, the date, the tax will expire on blank date. And then you would just need to make sure that was reflected in the ordinance that you adopted following, in the event that this measure passed.
Counselor Bowerman, it's your amendment. What would you like?
Good. I, I do like the idea of having a date certain in the future. And I believe that, and I'd like to check this with Mark Gassaway, March 31, 2032 would be consistent with your spreadsheet, would it?
Yeah, again, the, the, the timing is such that if the voters pass this, the council adopts it, the notification to the Department of Revenue is made after the first of the year, then we would begin collecting it April 1st of 2022. So 10 years from there would be March 31st, 2032.
That would be my preference in that event for the amendment and the resolution that I moved.
I'll second that with that, modify, that amendment to a date certain, March 31st, 2032.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed?
No, it's not their ballot measure.
Okay, motion passes. So, yes, I, I, excuse me, Taylor.
I have a, a request. As, as the person who's going to be typing some of this, I would ask that we confirm some of the page line additions so that, and potentially take a brief recess so that I could incorporate those and go through them with the council and make sure we don't have to have another meeting.
Okay, I think we, did, did, were you saying, Counselor Bowerman, that it be mentioned on line five?
Yes.
And then on line 39?
Could we please scroll down to there? I'm, Rebecca, if that were possible? Well, or 35 is in?
It would be 39, I believe. So, may I?
Revenue will be used for, yeah. Until?
Yeah, Rebecca, is it possible for me to share my screen? Or is that not possible?
So as you're looking at that, I, I do suggest we give Mark five or 10 minutes, whatever he needs, that we just take a recess.
Yeah, Taylor, yeah. While, while he's doing that, we could be talking about the other issue. Are we gonna, are we gonna talk about pro and con statements too?
Yes, and that is on the agenda today because if the council wants to choose somebody for the for and against statements, that needs to be submitted to the elections office tomorrow with the packet of information.
Okay, Taylor, you were, did you want to share your screen at this point, or do you want a few minutes?
Let me take just a few minutes.
Okay, okay. Okay, we also have, I, I think I'm going to open up the discussion about the for and against statements that are going to be written by committees. Is there, I think we put something out. And as far as writing, we also have a statement here about confirming with MRSC and PDC this morning, that elected officials may serve on committees to write for and get statements, but may not use any government resources, staff, technology, et cetera, for this activity. So we, I think, in my opinion, people writing the for and against statements, if we're going to select committees to do that, we need to know the people well that are writing these, or at least know what their what their skills, abilities, et cetera, are in order to do this. And I guess we just sent something out and people were responding to that. So I'd open up a discussion about this. It seems odd to me, when I was in the legislature and we did this kind of thing. Yeah, the legislature selected these people, but they were carefully selected and we knew who we were, you know, asking to do some of this. So I'd open it up for discussion.
Can members of the council in any way be considered a committee that could write a pro statement?
Based on the information that the chair just read that was provided to the council, it sounds like elected officials may serve on the committee to write for and against statements, but council may not use any government resources, staff, technology for this activity. So as, you can't use any county resources to do it, but you may.
May do it. Well, and if we could structure that, I think that would be one good pro statement.
Okay, it's an idea. We had one person sign up to do a con statement, but Gary, were you going to say something?
Oh, I was just going to add that based on our previous conversations with Taylor, that, you know, the PA's office, probably Taylor himself, will write the actual statement. And then we need a pro and a con. And I agree, it would be good to have some additional input into who does that. I mean, I guess I would suggest and volunteer Karen Bowerman to be on that pro committee and maybe someone like John Lee or some notable constituent that really pays very close attention to the issues in the county and is a good writer, writes well. Anyway, I mean, if we only have a day to come up with names, or do we only have a day to state that we're going to appoint a committee and then come up, okay, shaking heads.
The names need to be submitted if the council chooses. They have to be submitted with the packet that goes to elections. If the council does not submit any names, the auditor's office will be filling those positions.
Well, so I volunteer Karen Bowerman and I'm afraid to publicly volunteer John Lee without him agreeing to it ahead of time, but we are kind of short on time. I would nevertheless do so.
I suspect he would do it unless there's some kind of a conflict with his employment.
Counselor, I would note that the statute does indicate that people can work with other people to so whether you're on the committee or not, you can confer with others.
Okay. Sounds good to me, if you're willing, and John is willing, and others that they can confer with. I agree. Okay, any other comments?
If we don't have anyone to write the cons specifically, could that go to the auditor to then come up with his own, you know, he would take that on? Can we split it up that way?
Yeah, if you don't have a name, it will automatically go to the auditor's office. The only person who submitted for against statements from the community was David Pollan. You can certainly choose somebody else in the community or, or just simply not do it, and the auditor's office will then appoint who will do that.
Yeah, well, okay. Well, I certainly have no objection to that one volunteer. I mean, he's been very engaged on a number of issues here in the county and very articulate and a hard worker, and just recently graduated. So I certainly would have no objection to naming him as the, writing the opposition.
I have no objection to him either.
And also just to make one thing clear, I don't know if Taylor mentioned it, but if others are going to be on the four, it has to be a maximum of three people on that committee. So if you're going to be providing any additional names for that.
So are you choosing not to consider the names that submitted wanting to write a for statement?
Well, I did consider them. I'm very hopeful that their organizations will support the measures. It's in everyone's interest, but I, I don't think we need that many people beyond Karen and John and maybe someone they want to confer with. So I would not name the others.
Okay, so just checking to make sure that you're not considering the names that were brought forward. Thank you.
Okay, I did, I just said I did consider them, but don't think we have need to add so many people to.
Told us not to include them, but to include names from your own circle. So thank you, just wanting that on the record.
Yeah, so I consider the NAACP and LULAC within my circles. I'm working with both of them on different issues. So yes, they are within my circles and thank you for laughing. You're a real pal, Temple.
Very professional. So.
Hey, I appreciate humor as much as the next person. Thank you.
Well, unfortunately, joke's on you.
Please continue. This is fantastic.
Counselor, I think I'm ready to pull up some language when you are.
Okay.
Maybe there's a vote, there may be a vote on the table. I'm not, I didn't mean to interrupt that.
Do we need to vote on this? Okay, okay, so for the, for the pro statement committee, I guess, it's been suggested that Karen Bowerman sit and John Lee on that committee and another person which they can choose? I don't know.
I think you'll need to name the, a person. If the
Okay.
We need to submit a name. There's not a, there's not a requirement that there be three persons.
I understood there were to be three people. If there aren't three people, let's just do it with the two. And they can confer with others. So I move that. You're muted, Karen.
Whoops, I don't know three of the people on the statement for list except for Ed Hamilton, and I think having him work with us would be very nice.
Okay, let's add Ed Hamilton.
Okay. If Ed's still willing to do it, that would be great. I would support that as well.
As do I. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I'll say aye, without discussion, but I'll say aye.
Right. Opposed? Okay, motion passes. And for the against statement, we have David Pollan. And are you, do we need another name? Do we need two, Taylor, or Kathleen? I'm sorry, yeah.
It doesn't, the statute says there's a maximum of three people.
Okay. Well, let's, let's say David Pollan then, and if he wants to confer with somebody, he may. So I would move that we state David Pollan on the statement against.
I'll second it.
And all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, Taylor, did you have something else for us now? Are you, you're going to display the screen for the wording of the resolution?
Yes, Chair, I'm bringing that up right now. All right, I'm looking at resolution, doesn't have a number yet, but I've added this language right here under red. Oh, are you, I think, Chair, you may be muted.
Just reading it, which would be, March thirty-one.
Sorry. And then I'm scrolling down. I believe the next line was actually down in the ballot title. I've just put it right there. Yeah.
Does that meet with your approval, Counselor Bowerman?
Yes, of course.
Okay, all right. Well, we did vote on it already. Do we need to take action on, we already voted on the concept. Is that vote sufficient? I'm asking you, Taylor.
I, I would prefer a vote on this amended language as it reads on the screen, just so that we can be double sure.
Okay, it had been moved and seconded, and now we see the actual language of this motion for resolution twenty twenty-one dash oh eight dash oh one. The one, one ten to one percent sales tax for Clark County Juvenile Detentional Facilities and jails, which will expire on March thirty-first, twenty thirty-two.
Quick question, if I may?
Yes.
Would you please confirm again why that is not, that language is not necessary on line thirty-six?
That, that line, Counselor Bowerman, is essentially the heading for the, the description of the tax that will appear on the ballot. It's the I, I I don't think that's the appropriate place to put that information.
But, but why? That seems like it is, it should be a part of the title, wouldn't it? I'm just, just asking.
This is all, this is all the title. This is, this is, all of this language is the ballot title that I've highlighted here. And the convention of the form is, as I've seen it in all the ballots I've looked at over the past several days, is to the sales and use tax of an amount for a purpose, and that the terms relating to when it expires or how long it will last, or what it can be used for in particular are laid out in the, in the following text. So we have, yeah.
And, and is it point? Say, it says, sales and use tax of point one percent. Isn't it one tenth of one percent? Isn't that what's clearer to people, given that that's what appears below? I mean, because this needs to be looking parallel to people who read this.
Yes, Counselor, I I have seen it in all the ballot titles I've been looking at as this one tenth of one percent. I can
That is one tenth of one percent.
Yes, it is, but it may not look parallel to some people who are glancing at the ballot, may not even see a point there.
Sometimes, Counselor Bowerman, I've seen some, some clarifying. So down, I'll say on line thirty-eight, it would say one tenth of one percent. And then have
Yeah, I like that.
Something to the effect of zero points.
Yeah, and that's how it's used in the introduction. The first paragraph says tax of one tenth of one percent. So let's just be consistent and describe it the same way. Good, good catch, Karen.
Something to that effect.
And Counselor Medvedji, do you appreciate the addition of the parentheses there? Brand zero point one percent?
It's fine.
For clarity, yeah, I think so too.
Okay. With that. Counselor Olson?
Just in case, so I mean, I don't know on this again, but I do want to state for the record that once you all pass this, then I'll do everything I can to help get it passed. I just, I just think it could, we could have gotten a little bit higher opportunity to get this passed with the other one, but I'm going to vote no, but I'm going to do what I can to get it passed.
Thank you.
Yeah, let's all join together in trying to get this passed as a council, because it's for the betterment of everyone that we get it passed. Let's get on the same page.
I agree. Thank you. So all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
Okay, motion passes. I think that takes care of our business for today, our special meeting. So we're adjourned. Bye.
One, one. Okay. Kathleen, I'll call you in a moment.
I'm going into another meeting. Do you need to have them?